All right, I hand the meeting over to you.
Oh, well, thank you very much, thank you all. The next item on the agenda would be the minutes.
No need.
I mean, sorry.
The rest of it.
Oh, yes.
I'd love to impeach the chair.
I even had them all written down. We have to appoint a vice chair. I don't think we nominate and vote on it.
Correct.
I believe it's an appointment, or is it?
Um, they've nominated it. I only know frontier, so...
I would open, I mean, entertain a motion for nomination for vice chair if we had one.
David, do you agree with just the vice chair again?
Sure.
How we nominate, David?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations? Very done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. It was unanimous. Everything else is appointed. So we would need to have a frontier representative. Mary has served capably for many, many years. Would you like to continue?
I'd like to continue.
Wonderful.
You're in the business.
So Mary would become frontier representative. And we have two other positions that we have. Capital Improvements Planning Committee. Yes.
Well, you have secretary still.
Yes, I was going to...
Clerk secretary.
Clerk secretary next.
And then you've got a...
Unit thirty-eight representatives, collaborative representatives, Capital Improvements Planning Committee. Okay. Policy Review Committee.
Negotiations and negotiations. I mean, I would just appoint you just for some reason.
Right. Okay. So we would need to appoint a secretary. Jan had served as secretary the last couple of years, I believe.
I think he has, yeah.
There are no onerous duties involved with being a secretary, for the most part. There's an occasional document that might need to be signed, but beyond that, we don't require their secretary to take the minutes. A member generally does that, or I could try to continue to do it even as I'm chairing. Doesn't bother me. So if you'd be interested in being our secretary?
I could do that.
Okay. Union thirty-eight representatives. We have three, just so we can fill in the blanks. We have three voting representatives out of our five members. All five members can participate in joint committee meetings, which is what the Union Thirty-eight Representatives are eligible to vote in, but only three of us vote. So that every town has three representatives that can vote when it comes to a joint meeting. And we don't outweigh any of the other towns if it comes to even split all the way across, assuming all members are present. So David, myself, and Trevor have been the three voting reps. Mary serves as a frontier representative, so she has a vote. Well, she doesn't have a vote in the joint meetings, I'm sorry. Generally, when we have the joint meetings, she is participating on the frontier side. So if you're interested in being a voting member, if you have a burning desire to be one, I could certainly step aside.
I'd be happy to do it if someone did want to step aside.
Okay.
If you are happy to continue, that's fine.
Okay. All right, may just continue with the three that we have for now. Because I forgot the chair.
You have a chair. It gets complicated.
It's difficult.
As I say, I think it'd be good if you...
Yes.
...gave because of the knowledge and wisdom and...
Okay.
Yeah, and also talk about the chairs meeting that I want to do, which will have an effect on that.
And David.
Being plugged in there.
Yeah. And Trevor.
I do enjoy having to say that.
You'd like to call from Valentine's Day dinner to get up and issue your vote? Yes, we enjoy that.
I am dedicated.
Clearly, you make the push.
There's a position here that Jan had been filling for us for a year or two. It's the collaborative in, it used to be the Hampshire Educational Collaborative, and it's now just the collaborative. They provide special education services and professional development services and a myriad of other services statewide. But the Frontier Regional District, Deerfield Elementary School, and the Union Thirty-eight Schools all pay a membership association fee and serve, and we have a representative on their board. The board meets...
Every other month.
It's every other month throughout the year. It's usually about a two-hour meeting.
Dinner served.
What's that?
Dinner served.
Yeah, there's a... Dinner is served. I don't know if they can't meet up here.
No, it's all in Northampton.
It's all in Northampton now.
Typically, yeah.
So it's down in Northampton. It's pretty interesting to get a feel for special education services, but it is an obligation every other month of about two hours.
That does sound interesting.
It does sound interesting.
You learn a ton there.
Yeah, and you learn a lot.
I've learned more than anything.
And you meet other representatives from other districts.
Collaborating with it. Hence the word, collaborate.
He's good, isn't he?
You can see how he got one.
So then we will appoint Carrie.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
It's one of those, also one of those meetings, if something in your life comes up and you can't...
Yeah. They've got a big board.
It's a big group and they want us there, but obviously, you know who the facts are. Most people try to make two or two of the four meetings, or, you know, three of the four meetings, that kind of stuff. I'm just kind of putting it out there.
Yeah, something.
Don't stress yourself out and think it's real, just...
Capital Improvements Planning Committee. This is a, the school committee has, by the town's bylaws, has a representative that serves on the Capital Improvements Planning Committee. And that involves anywheres from five to ten meetings a year, all concentrated in the December-January timelines. I've been serving on it. I'm more than happy to continue to serve on it, but I did miss a number of meetings this year because I was out of town. And I intend to be out of town in February. So I would, you know, if the committee wants, or if anybody on the committee wants to consider participating on that, anyone but Trevor, because he's already in a quasi role as a select board member. It would be difficult to have him serve. But if David, Mary, or Carrie's interested, otherwise I can continue and...
Can you designate, can you designate someone to, is it a voting thing?
There is voting, and it has to be a school committee member by the bylaws.
Is it possible for you to, in the end, to do it, but for us, the Senate designate me when you're away?
Sure, I imagine we could do that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I would be happy to do that.
Okay, that's a great idea. I'm proud of that. Okay, so I will appoint myself to that. Policy Review Committee. Should, will that be as active in the coming year? Shouldn't be anywhere near as active.
No, we may have a few that'll come across and we may have to review. Usually now, they kind of, you just went through everything.
Right.
So now it's about any new comes across, or we have an issue that requires us to set a policy. So it's kind of like it's on the on-deck circle in case it's needed and you know who, you know what I mean? Then you go, oh, you're on, and they go, oh, darn, I gotta meet next year.
Would you want to continue to do that?
I'll do it, sure.
Okay, so we'll be Mary, its policy. And I'd like to continue with David and Trevor as the negotiations team. At least, I don't know where we stand. I guess we're gonna find out tonight where we stand.
Yep.
So I think for continuity's sake, I don't think we want to change any faces if we can avoid it at this stage, so. Very good.
Full disclosure that I'm not really, I'm not on at this year, even though it says I am. We had little, yeah. You could be if you wanted to.
Technically, you're on it. I keep saying you're absent.
Oh, really? Because technically, there was, okay. Well, I think we had a little snafu then.
We did. I think it was a miscommunication.
Okay.
Or misinterpretation, but, all right, well, if you need that time-breaking vote, it's all right.
We, yeah, I didn't think I would involve, go around with it.
Okay.
You are next, then?
Next time. At this point, you have the...
I have no knowledge.
I was gonna say the constitutional right, that's probably not correct. You have the school policy right to attend next meeting. You have been moving along, and the full team that's there, representing, solving representations, so.
Okay.
Wouldn't feel bad. And you should feel bad, but you should get over it.
So that should complete the reorganization. And we could review and approve the minutes on May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
We move to approve the minutes on May fourteenth?
Second.
Any comments, changes, or any other notes? Very done, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions? It's five zeros. Financials and statements.
I have a total of fourteen warrants and doctors on, for you, for a total of one hundred forty thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars and two cents. I've also included in the materials the results, the expenditure results for May. And again, just continuing the analysis of where we're heading for the end of the year. Again, with two weeks left to go in the fiscal year, you're in a great place. There are some, a few expenditures that still need to be made, you know, and I would, again, recommend that if we do come up with a positive balance, that we potentially replace the price from expenses from school choice back into the global. And leave money in school choice so that Danny can just continue to be in that healthy place that you are now. So that would be my recommendation moving forward.
That is good news.
Yes, it is.
Two weeks to go in the year. And thank you for, thank you for the good financial information you can provide. Great.
I became nationally certified as a school finance and operations officer.
Oh, great.
And sit for a three-hour exam, which I hadn't done one of those in about ten years. It was about a month ago, so.
Congratulations.
In and everything, so.
There you go.
Now I'm official S F O, so.
There you go. Excellent.
Good work.
Public comment.
So just on the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir. Are you waving completely?
No, no.
Just standing.
Oh, I didn't know if she was waving or...
No, no, no.
I just wanted to thank Judy, Dr. Hoole, for her work. This will probably be her, unless we have an emergency meeting of some sort, this would be her last meeting with us. And she came to us mid-year, as everybody knows, after starting, we started with TMS, but she jumped on mid-year to kind of run the Deerfield books. And just been very, very helpful, very thorough, and also good to have another former administrator to run things by in the office. So I appreciate everything you do.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure. I actually enjoy covering your meetings. I've always been able to say that.
So just to clarify, are we looking for any kind of a message or approval or vote about what to do with the fund balance?
There are some things that are, that are still out.
We'll need that later.
You don't necessarily need to vote it, per se. I mean, this is just part of normal management of your finances. I mean, I know there are some incoming invoices in June. Tina and I have talked about some things that she would like to purchase, you know, with this year's funds, since there are some funds left to be able to do some things. So she and I are gonna come up with a spending plan later this week and try and get those things taken care of so we can get the funds in covered, et cetera. And then, you know, I think by that point in time, there's a couple of maintenance things out there and such. You'll probably come pretty close. It won't be much to cover.
Okay, great.
Which is the way you want it to be. But it should be a good reflection of what your intended expenditures are, so.
Yeah, and I think we would probably support anything the administration wanted to spend the available money on.
I mean, yes, there had been talk of needing to take some of the funds and put it towards work with boys, like, things like that.
Yeah, and all of that's pretty much been taken care of.
Has it? Okay, good.
And we're watching some last-minute invoices come in for June, so.
Yeah. Okay.
It'll probably be in the, kind of, you know, where the dust has settled when we get to the end.
Okay. So we are down to total comment. We have none. And we move to unfinished business, non-union salary recommendations. We need to go to executive session.
So I would recommend that we have two executive sessions. So I would recommend if we, if the committee so desires to put that on hold, because that's gonna require an executive session, and then go forward with the school B chairs, and then the reports, and then go to the executive session at the end for one block. That'd be my recommendation.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, so I'll go right onto the next piece then.
Okay.
So I wanted to talk about, and bring this up to the meeting as a whole, because I want to have a meeting. I'm thinking about how I'm bouncing around from meeting to meeting, and a lot of the times, we're voting on materials or being presented materials that really requires everybody to be on board with, yet if you're not first in line, you have a disadvantage, or the whole process has a disadvantage. Now, I'll use the health grant as an example. So the last, you know, you guys approved that, it went through, everybody did approve it, moving forward. But if you don't know what's coming, and I don't have an idea of kind of direction to go with it, and you kind of get surprised, you know, you find it on the agenda, then you discuss it, but you're happening, you know, you're the third or fourth meeting, and I'm like, three out of four, I voted, or, you know, that kind of thing. And so that, and there's a lot of other kind of loose ends, like, example, the same thing happened with my evaluation. You know, it started, discussion started at Wheatley. By the time, it was really like a game of telephone. By the time it got to the last meeting, the, what the evaluation was going to look like had a lot of twists and turns. And I found myself trying to direct this committee to go with where it started, rather than taking full input from everyone else. And so what I want to do is have a monthly, or when needed, chairs meeting to set the agenda for the month, especially the joint meeting agenda. Because sometimes I'm also, we've had a lot of discussion, what should come on the joint meeting agendas, and I want to make sure those meetings are not me doing all the, setting the parameters of it, but the committees are setting the parameters of it. So I want to create a meeting with chairs to meet with me to help steer that. And so that there's some, it's not just, you know, it's just not all me kind of steering the whole thing. So the reason why I should bring it to the whole committee is I can always call the chairs to be with me, that kind of stuff. But there is an idea that it does give the chairs, in a way, it takes some administrative power away from me, but it gives them more power to the chairs because they're helping set the joint meeting agendas. And they're also setting what's going through, you know, all five meetings. And so, I don't know, I just found that, I found last month very, I don't want to use the word frustrating, but it was very kind of like, I don't know, I felt like I was doing kind of a song and dance and trying to get people on the same board.
Instead of getting it all in one shot.
Yeah. And then, I mean, I found myself even repeating conversations that other committees had to other committees to try to get them on the same page on a material that if all the chairs are on the same page, the chairs can kind of have an idea. In one case, I kind of bossed the chair around, and I apologize afterwards. But it was in jest, but you know what I mean, how I can, you know, sometimes I can just kind of take over. I don't mean to. I mean, I need to. You understand what I'm saying? So this is the idea that, I don't know, I just want to think about for next year, having a meeting and so forth. And so I kind of want, I don't know how this works, we have a, you don't really need a blessing, but I guess it's the informal blessing of that, you know, that those meetings would occur. Because if I suddenly, if I felt if I suddenly started having meetings with chairs, other committee members are like, you know, what is he doing? You know, what's this chair meeting about? Is there something going on? And that's not what it's about.
It's more about setting the agenda and everybody on the same page at one time in the district, so that people kind of all get, get the news at the same time, set the agenda at the same time.
Correct.
And of course, anybody probably through their, through their own chair could bring an issue up that they had an issue wanting to discuss. You could pass it through the chair, the chair could bring it to the meeting, and get it on the...
Right, I mean, legally, the chair sets the agenda with consultation with the superintendent. And that's basically how it works. I mean, we kind of, because we're, I have a business office, I mean, not just a business office, but an office that conducts the business. I set the agenda, get the chair's approval, because I'm getting kind of, I'm doing all the clerical work on that kind of thing. But, you know, if the chair got a phone call, or somebody else got a phone call and said, we need to add the discussion of Blue Flowers in the Garden on the next chair, you know, I mean, the chair would say, I want to add this. Or if somebody in a committee meeting that says we want to discuss, the chair can say it's on the agenda, or the chair can say, you know what, we have time today's agenda to address that, as long as it's not something that needs to be posted within twenty, twenty-four hours. So it's not trying to, you know, that's just basically what I'm...
So I'm still wondering though how, so I think that part is great for all the groundwork and getting everybody's thoughts together ahead of time. But when you bring something like the health grant to the committee, we're still gonna be seeing it for the first time. You still have that bump to get over, the five committees seeing something for the first time, and everybody wants to have their input, right?
Yeah, it still has a chance, anything still has a chance of being discussed by one committee and not approved by one school district.
Does having more joint meetings help?
That's what I was just gonna say, should we have?
Should you try to smoosh in a couple more joint meetings?
Well, there's going to be, so...
You want everyone to add?
We had quite a bit this year, and we're gonna have quite a bit again. And I won't say quite a bit. We're gonna have a few extra next year because the committee's gonna have to get together to vote the negotiation settlement. You know, that kind of thing. So right now, we have one set for October, but, you know, pending the timeline of negotiations, if everything goes smoothly this month, you're looking at probably a September joint meeting for that purpose. Now then, it becomes where I come at was, do I add other things to the agenda? So this is where when, you know, when we hired the business manager, I only kept one thing on the agenda because I personally felt like, oh my God, I'm dragging everybody out for another meeting. You know what I mean? I won't add anything else to that agenda, make it very sweet, come in, you know, very simple, come in, make the vote, get out. But that's me setting that agenda when, you know, there's other...
I know, I've always felt, I really enjoyed the joint meetings, and I kind of feel like everybody's on the same page. I can hear where everyone's at, feel like we do good business. But I do know it's taxing for the, your office and getting warrants together and all that stuff. I know it's very hard to kind of put all that together for your team, so I'm in favor of that. But I'm in favor of the collaboration with the chairs. I'm going to support that.
What's interesting with those joint meetings is that we got better.
We did.
We got better working, I mean, because the amount of meetings that had to occur, starting last June, with the changeover in the super temency, and then through this year. People started to know each other, and, you know what I mean? Because it used to be a lot icier.
Is that right?
I used to sit and watch for a minute. It's not icy, but people didn't know. You got a quirky personality, or you got someone who's being funny, you know, everybody's sure if they're being funny, if they're, you know what I mean? And everybody kind of learned each other, you know, that...
It's a good work.
Because it is a good, I mean, I mean, all the committees are good people.
Yeah.
And they're, sometimes it wasn't, people weren't sure what the intentions were, people, when they, when they were always, you know, for the most part, honest.
So if, I think, great conversation here. Are the agendas in the individual towns essentially the same?
Almost exactly.
Almost exactly?
Basically, and the only thing that changes on them are if you have individual issues.
Okay, so...
You know, so, if everything's kind of the timing of the year is, you know, outside of budget season, obviously. Budget, the agendas are the same, but what you're talking about is different.
But outside of the budget season, if we went to, and because people ask, if we went to a joint meetings, from joint meeting structure, and the receptions were the budget meetings in December, January, February, that might actually work to your advantage. But I don't know.
The issue, the issue is...
The towns and the warrants and...
Yeah, I mean, the issue is always the finances, because that really is the number one, outside of hiring me. That's the number one thing that you guys really are, I mean, you're seeing, we're seeing policy and such, but as you know, that's not a moving thing from meeting to meeting. But really overseeing the budget, the budget process, you know, different towns are in different places. You know, you sundown this year, and even sundown next year, they're gonna have longer discussions regarding their budget because it's a tighter budget next year. So in a joint meeting, I'd have to figure out how to meet those needs, and sometimes those aren't met in those...
But, but the joint meeting format that we had was, it has been joint meeting followed by individual meetings.
Great. The advantage of the joint meeting is to, you can deal with the issue you're trying to avoid, which is spread out over two or three weeks, one committee making a slightly different decision or choice about something that you're bringing to all the committees around the central office policy or something like that. But the, so that's a good reason for joint meeting. The bad reason for joint meetings is we individually get less of you in our breakout session afterwards. But what you're suggesting is, you know that there's certain committees that are gonna need a little more of you after those meetings.
But I would then also say, this whole discussion is a great discussion for the chairs to have a conversation about, should we be putting this in the joint meeting to discuss this particular conversation? And have some way to steer, because the other problem is, we have the joint meeting of twenty twenty-five. Sometimes I lose my track of how many people, how many bosses are. You just throw, you can't throw as many problems out and say, what should we do with this?
Right.
You know, what's for dinner? You know what I mean? No, we gotta kind of give the ingredients and say, you know, this is what we got, and we're thinking about Italian tonight. You know what I mean? And so you're kind of, you know, you're pushing kind of at least a direction. And yes, it can be steered back by, a different direction by the committee, but without some direction given with that large of a committee, that's kind of, you know, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Yeah.
Maybe it's, makes sense to kind of, you know, go the direction you're thinking of this year, and then maybe next year.
See what comes of it.
Yeah, as you meld it into...
Well, the first, the first order of business of a chairs meeting will be my evaluation. So right now, Donna's collecting all the information.
Yep.
What do I do with it?
Right.
You know what I mean? It's technically your evaluation of me. It's my evaluation connected by you, but I know, you know, I kind of did the legwork of putting it together, but would have, how do we do it? How do you want to present it? How do you want to do it? And then we did it as a trial, and how do we get input back from people? Right now, I set all that up. Bring it to the first meeting and then kind of, you know, that's probably a good example, it's like, how should we present the findings of that meeting? Should there be, not that, did I say meetings, of the evaluation? Should we do a tally of it all? Should we break it out by committee, do, you know, that kind of?
That's the...
You know, I could, I would set it, now if I set the agenda with my own evaluation, people should be like, well, it better look good on it, because you said of your own evaluation. You know what I mean? But you understand what I'm saying, like, you know, that kind of thing. And so, and then from there, maybe we start there, and then we decide how we want to. Because, you know, again, I mean, sometimes the joint meetings, especially when I bring other administrators to give reports on things, it's, you know, it's, you know, for example, go back to my experience, if we had a joint meeting, that would've been easy. Right. I brought in, everybody could have heard, the same discussion happened, literally, two a T. What's gonna happen in year four? I'm paying for another administrator. What's the checks and balance on this? And so, again, what happened in meeting four is I said, you're gonna ask this, this, and this question. So let me answer it for you. It's like, can you at least let us process? And I was like, oh, sorry. Yeah, so, I don't know, and again, Mary, you're right. It doesn't, it doesn't alleviate that, but on some other areas, it does give me some direction. And if the chairs don't like it, they can say, there is this non-meeting at work, so this is another, you know, that kind of thing.
And to get the, to get those types of issues up, if, you know, as a chairperson, if we're sitting there and we say, this makes more sense for a joint committee meeting, then you can set it aside.
I can set it aside for a joint committee meeting, or we need to have a, if I say we need to have a joint committee meeting because of a number of issues, a new joint meeting, technically speaking, each chair would have to agree, or now I guess maybe just the, no, it would just be the chair of the joint could have to... You understand how kind of it turns into...
Right.
It flows wave power from the things. I know. But there's some talk, you know, I mean, not talk about, but just, not regionalize as people look at regionalization, but regionalize the administration of five districts.
Yep. Make it a little smoother.
You know, it's not, I don't know, there's, there's thoughts. I got thoughts. We'll get there eventually, not... get there eventually, not, don't get, panic, go home, it's not going.
Well, I support the direction anyways, so, I support this direction anyways, and I, it seemed, to me, it seems like an evolution kind of thing, where you start here and then hopefully we wind up in a better spot.
Just one of the slight drawbacks, of course, is that even when you get the chairs together, they can't go and bang their committees' heads together and get a consensus until the next meeting, just because of our meeting, so it doesn't really help you, I mean, it helps to breeze it a little bit, but you still may end up with committees that don't quickly get and ratify the same thing that you're wanting everyone to kind of do.
Right, and I guess again, I'm looking for a trial, a couple meetings, if we find out it's a waste of time, or, you know, that kind of thing, then, then we don't do it, but I also felt weird if I just, I'm bringing it to full camp again, I'm repeating myself now, but I felt weird like calling all the chairs up and saying, because it's, it's an unposted meeting, meaning the chairs, there's no form.
Right.
So if I call the chairs and people go like, why'd you, you know, what's going on? You know, is there crisis? Is he looking for whatever, or is he, you know, and I don't want, and I kind of want people to feel, I saw it, and it, from a different administrator do something where hand-selected school committee members were brought together to do things, and it didn't feel correct, and I saw that in the past. So I want to make sure that this is kind of done openly, that we're going to do this through, and so again, we started with the evaluation, which is, because we don't have a formal process or a past practice of how it was done.
Right.
You know, and I'd love to get it in the trial run, because if there was, if there was dissension among the different committees and we don't have a how you do it, something like that could just blow up.
Right.
So, anyway, that's that.
Sounds good.
So we'll have a meeting at some point with the chairs to go over the evaluations, which you guys need to fill out.
Yes, that one is done.
We didn't get enough time on that.
No.
Two weeks? Did you open it up, wasn't it? It's pretty strange.
I know, I did open it, and I started, and I got interrupted, so.
If you need an extension, talk to your chair, that can probably, I can extend, that date was made up, I picked two weeks ago.
Yep.
We're just on two weeks. So, but, really, that was a arbitrary date, like, middle of the month?
Yep.
Kind of date.
It is multiple. I get that, there is some...
Reports and information. Chair, chair, what's that? Chair has no report. All right, collaborative, no paperwork, it's on my, all right.
Well, that's me.
Yes.
So, I don't know if you guys know this, but it's almost the end of the summer. We have a lot of community activities going on, and traditions, and ceremonies, I just want to thank Tom Scialzo and all the gym teachers for Junior Olympics and the K2 Fun Day, that's always a fun event, one of my favorite activities, I'm like, I'm happy because she was in the K, she wasn't in the K2 Fun, I don't want to give that away, is we do the slip inside, have you seen that, the trepper, of the trepper?
Caleb.
Yeah, with Caleb, have you seen that?
I don't think so.
Oh my gosh, it's hilarious, there's like stove bin water and they go down the hill on these big plastic...
Out back here? Oh, good, that must be so cute.
Then we had our K visitation night where we welcomed the new kindergarten families and kindergartners, and we just had our grade six versus teachers basketball game, where Darius probably will not show up anymore because I roped him into playing because we needed a little height on our team.
Yeah.
So I think he did get us one basket or two.
I don't know.
This is my house.
I shouldn't have counted.
I should have counted. I was going to go with two, because it's better to say that. We had our community service day today too, so there's a new mural on the back library wall, and I don't know if you noticed the courtyards when you came in, soon as we're busy working across the day today. What did first grade do, the front courtyard?
We planted lupines in the front.
Oh, it's beautiful out there, it really looks nice.
And we have recognition day on Thursday, so we're gearing up to come to that.
Yes, I have a quick question on kindergarten, how we, when do we get numbers and all that kind of, so how was the...
We have sixteen in each classroom, should I have brought those numbers?
No, that's okay, just curious, you have sixteen in each class?
Sixteen in each classroom, I believe we took second school to use.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
My report, negotiations still ongoing with the teachers, we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, I'll give more details on that when we're executive. The director of facilities is, interviews are underway, I did ask Trevor to help with that, and so he's serving on my search committee, his background in, background in building and also being from the towns is, is I thought was a great addition to the group, so that's happening. Your superintendent evaluation is out, you know, not just evaluate me, but remember, it's also practice kind of run to see if this is a format that we kind of want to build off moving forward. This, actually, I didn't update this, this, I wrote, it might be a collected, there might be a summer meeting for the, the UN3D contract, but after, I wrote this last Tuesday, we had a meeting since then, the, because the association needs to have a posted meeting to vote any changes we do to the contract, and we normally do not do that during the summer, I'm making some assumptions on, on that part, that they won't vote, we won't be voting a new contract until September. So I've had to send out letters of rehire using last year's numbers because nothing's going to actually be approved until September, even if we, you know, we have a meeting tomorrow, even if we wrap it up tomorrow, they still wouldn't, they have to, they have a posting rule, you know, then I also, I have to have a joint meeting of this group, so really, by the time that contract gets finalized, it's going to be, it's going to be September because of the way the summer works. So, just kind of bringing it up, people's, when I first wrote this, I was just kind of putting it on people's radar that we may have a summer meeting, but I didn't realize that the, the association had a posting rule and, and they don't like doing those meetings when people are away, because there's no way they can, so if they change that and that kind of thing, maybe we'll have a summer meeting, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay.
I just wanted to do a heads up on what the administration is doing for our retreat, we're going away to, we will, we are doing on the 20th, we are doing our district goals and professional development plan, and then, so it's a full day workday for all the, all the administrators, and then the 21st, we're doing something new this year, I'm calling it a workday, because it's the only day they work all year, no, it is the, I'm bringing everybody together from the, you know, from all five schools, we have forms, five different forms in five different schools, and we have handbooks that are created differently in every single school. You know, each school needs to have some, its own flavor in its handbooks and stuff, but some of the organization and procedures and that kind of stuff, we just need to do more collaborative and kind of putting together, so we've already created, Tina's actually was the one who kind of created the outline for it, created a work list of all the things that we want to work on, we're prioritizing it already, it looks like it's going to take more than one day, and the administrators are also feeling like they want to do another workday because they really think it's important, because there's nothing worse than, you know, you get one field trip permission form from one elementary school, one from another school, and they look different, they really should have the same with bigger, different logo at the top, that kind of stuff, and so as we change policies and that stuff, we can change it in one spot. Also, our websites really need to have, if we're changing one thing, I don't, I shouldn't have to have to change it on five different sites, it should be linked to one main spot, those kind of, you say, simple stuff, but the way things have developed over time, that hasn't been, so kind of creating more, streamlining there. And then the 27th and 28th, we are, the Curriculum Management Solution Company, CMSI, was going to come out, I say was now, because we got a snafu a day ago, or two days ago, that the trainer is fallen ill and may not be coming out, so we're trying to figure out what we're going to do with this place, but eventually, it's not going to happen here, we're going to do it at another time, but the curriculum management solution really looks at looking at evaluating, looking at evaluating your own curriculum and looking at evaluating instruction. We also need to have uniformity, so all principals are looking and seeing the same thing. This is something we do very well as a district, I have to, you know, as I talk with other superintendents, especially regional district with different elementary schools, our curriculum is very solid amongst all four schools, it could be very different, and a lot of other, I won't say a lot, other regional school district that have the same kind of feeder system, have different things coming out of different elementary schools, haven't coordinated, like, you know, what, you know, going back, all the way back to Dr. Nash and Julie's Law, kind of making that so that all students, that you can't, when you get to middle school, say, you're from this town, you're from this town, based on just where their level is in math, that kind of stuff, that all the schools are moving on together, and that's, and that's been, that's been great. So again, this is keeping that moving forward, and then how are we going to trickle that to improve our curriculum? So, because we, you know, we are already above average district, but we have to keep moving that bar, and maybe I can, and then, I'm on summer vacation, that's...
Just a question, the administrative team, as it presently is constituted, are all full year employees now? Or are, do you have people that are...
Yes.
So they're, this team will all be...
Yes, right, and anybody who is a new hire, I worked out to either, to do some horse swapping of a day, give me a day, I'll give you a day out in July, become in June, those who are starting July 1, I just do horse swapping days so that they can be there.
But that's okay.
Exactly, didn't do it, they volunteered to come.
That's right.
So, right.
Okay, I just, I just was curious, because at one point in time, maybe this was not a full year employee, kind of, but...
Not before my time.
Not before your time, so, okay.
Yeah, and with all the summer programs going on right now, I don't know how you could do that without a full year person.
Okay, very good, so, all right, so we are back to, we are now up to executive session, no other board reports at this point in time, I mean, reports, so we would be looking for executive session, I'd entertain a motion to enter executive session, can I do them both together?
You could say chapter 38 and 31A sections.
Yeah, so pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter 30A, section 21-2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and also pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter 31A, section 21-3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in this area, does so declare.
Second.
Okay.
Role calling.
Role call, Ken, yes? David, yes?
Trevor McDaniel, yes?
Mary?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Okay, and section, and we'll do one more role call on the 31A, or no?
I think you're on the other, you're declaring that both subjects will be discussed, you have to declare what you discussed, I think you're okay.
Are we inviting anybody?
You passed the test, right?
And we are... Inviting the... We are inviting...
You can invite both.
Okay, so we have...
Don't let them out.
Sorry.
Don't let them out.
Yeah, we're going to meet right here.
Very good, so we will, and we will reconvene and vote.
It is possible you could take a vote.
Yeah.
So, go either way.
It's your choice whether you want to stick around for when we reconvene, but at this point in time, we're going into executive session.
All right, I'll just...
We are back in session, thank you, and we have one item on the agenda for voting, and that would be the fiscal 2020, it's depressing to say that, time is flying, non-union salary recommendations schedule that we have discussed, so I would entertain a motion if there is one here.
I'd make a motion to approve the presented pay schedule, I'm going to list, list it out, no, it's good, for, for Deerfield non-union and for district personnel non-union.
Second then? Team, and second, and seeing there's no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Very good, thank you very much, we will, motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Any discussion, anyone want to stay longer? No. All in favor?
Aye.